They calling in?
Um, let me see here. Nancy will be calling in if she, yeah.
I was so scared. Not having that. I'm sure you were. I said, and that's great. Part I feel like I'm Brian's. Sure, the same state. This is his favorite. I had to find someone like an house. We at him while you say that. Did you get my text?
I deleted it.
I told her to try to call.
Could have been that important then. Certainly not important enough to get him finger.
You deleted?
Yeah.
We can go through like that. The normal operation sign and then try to dial back in maybe.
Okay. The last text message from you is January twenty first.
So I'm struggling with rounding up five different listeners that have different information. I had one of the five response.
Yes, this morning. Ask you to please rise if you're able. We'll be in first place. Heavenly Father, we gather this morning in humility. Thank you for your many blessings. We pray for your guidance and strength. We give thanks for this holiest week of the year as we celebrate Passover and Easter. Remember the unmeasurable and sacrifice of your son. And resurrection give us hope. For us with your grace and your love. We pray for those that have lost loved ones in Israel and Gaza. Pray for the remaining hostages. They'll be reunited with their families soon. Pray for the peacemakers striving to bring an end to the suffering. We ask you for your healing on every broken heart in this region. Father, we're thankful that no one was hurt. Past Sunday, arson fire at the governor's mansion. We pray that this violence and hatred will end worldwide. For next Tuesday, recognize and honor the Army Reserve under one hundred seventeenth birthday. It's the state of approximately two hundred thousand trained soldiers. They play a vital role in every war and conflicts since World War One. Our Army Reserve units in all fifty states. Twenty time zones across the world and five U.S. territories. And we thank reserves for their service and we pray for their safety daily. I ask you to honor meaning. Pray these things humbly in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We will be the commissioners public media at this time and we have some questions. Corrections to the agenda.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm so correction to personnel actions regarding resource management. I'm Gary Steiger, that's deputy director of operations manager, acting director of resource management. Pay grade thirteen, full time, eighty six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, point two, zero, four, five cents. I'm per year, eighty hours per pay period, effective date, April fourteenth.
I motion to add something to the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On their side. Okay, as for approval, the minutes of previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All their side.
Then we have Mark Lippka from. Oh, so public comment, sorry.
We have public comment on agenda items this time. And for the audience, the online.
Nothing online.
Okay. Good, then we have a proclamation commissioner.
The proclamation for Pennsylvania eight one one Safe Digging Month. Whereas the month of April twenty twenty-five recognizes as Pennsylvania eight one one Safe Digging Month. An initiative sponsored by Pennsylvania eight one one, the Utility Notification and Information Center. Fifty-three years of continued service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Pennsylvania eight one one receives a million excavating notifications in twenty twenty-four. Over three thousand construction projects. Port. Portent P A transmitted approximately six million notifications. Their members, facility owners and operators allowing essential utility and construction crews. Provide vital underground services and repair of critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. Whereas when contracting eight one one. At least three businesses, three business days before digging a homeowner or a contractor is connected. The unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators. In the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas by notifying eight one one by their intent to dig. The homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities themselves, the work crew. And their neighbors from any unsafe dating practices within their community. And whereas upon receiving the notification from Pennsylvania eight one one. The facility owners and operators dispersed to the set work site to mark the appropriate location. Of their underground utility lines with flags, paint or both. To establish eighteen inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of the line or facility. And now therefore be resolved. Till Lake Coming County in support of the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law. P A Act two eighty-seven of nineteen seventy-four. As amended, we do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Pennsylvania eight one one Safe Digging Month. And encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania eight one one website. At W W W dot P A one call dot org for information about digging safely. Signed Lake Coming County Commissioners, Scott Almetzer Chair, Mark C. Storkman Vice Chair, and Mark Losina Secretary.
Hey, good morning, Mark.
Morning.
Uh, Jake, would you come along with you?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Well. Good morning, uh, my name is Mark Lippka. I'm supervisor of education for Pennsylvania eight one one. I appreciate, uh, Lake Coming County and the commissioners for proclaiming April Safe Digging Month. A lot of what we do was said in that proclamation. Our purpose is to prevent damage to underground facilities. To promote safety, we provide an efficient and effective communications network among our facility owners. Our excavators, designers and, uh, project owners, which are the stakeholders in the underground industry. So, um, as that said, we had over a million tickets called in or put in via the web last year, which approximately is about six million locates. So that's the flags, the paint, um, that you see on the ground. So what the excavators, uh, who are going to do the work. Contact P A one call whether they're professionals or homeowners. The service is free for homeowners. Uh, and then we communicate with those utilities in that area. So then come out and mark their facilities so that excavation can be done safely. For the people who are excavating and then also so those facilities don't become damaged. We appreciate, uh, like I said, Lake Coming County and the commissioners for proclaiming April Safe Digging Month. It is the beginning of the dig season and we are going to be very busy.
So for the public, if you're not sure, safety call.
Always call eight one one, um, especially when you're using powered equipment, uh, putting in fences, augers, anything like that. But if you're putting in a mailbox even and just using a shovel and you're not familiar with where those facilities might be. Gas, especially in this area. Call P A one call, we'll contact the local gas company here and they'll come out and mark those facilities for you. Because the damage can even happen with a shovel or a pickaxe or anything like that.
Great, appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
Proclamation, your picture?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You're in this.
I'm in the middle.
You're important.
Yeah.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, reports, Nikki.
Good morning. Um, presented for your ratification are invoices due through April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five to be paid on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. In the amount of two million, five hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents. Thirty-three point five three out of the general fund. Seven point seven six out of grants, point six one out of grants, act thirteen, twenty-six point seven three out of other grants. Thirty-one point oh two percent out of R M S and point three six out of P S G R O.
Okay. Um. Your motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the council? Hearing none, all of your side.
Thank you.
I mean, the information items, Mike?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, two informational items. Uh, one in the district attorney slash processing center office, Ray Kuntz. Uh, this is a processing detective position, pay grade nine, full time. At fifty-two thousand per year, eighty hours per pay period. Effective transfer date, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And then in the sheriff's office, John Atabanio, deputy sheriff, one one four, full time. This should be up to twenty-three, twenty-seven. Uh, that's an air at twenty-two sixty-three, so twenty-three, twenty-seven per hour after certification. Eighty hours per pay period, effective promotion date, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the next two items, three point two, um, just acknowledge the county will be accepting bids for the emergency watershed protection projects. That's an estimated two point two million dollar project that's fully funded by an R C S. Um, and the next item I have is knowledge that the county is requesting bids for Funk at Creek Blockhouse. And Little Pine Creek's Fish Habitat Project. Again, those are a hundred percent funded. The, uh, community action.
Thank you.
Yep.
At this time, we'll recess. We need to call the salary board. Salary board this time.
The first item I have is to approve the salary board minutes from the April tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
In the controller's office, remove the office manager, uh, full-time position from the T B A. And add a part-time administrative assistant position to the.
Okay, uh, how about the first action, is there a motion to remove the office manager from P, from the T D A?
Yeah, I'll make that.
I'll second.
All their side.
Hi.
Second part, uh, add a part-time administrative assistant position to the T P A, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All their side.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
This time we'll need to the salary board recommitment of Mr. Spoke to me for personal actions. Mike?
Or again?
Uh, proven following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the success, successful completion. Of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. In the adult probation office, Sarah Johns, E V P Coordinator, Acting Bail Release Supervisor, pay grade nine, full time. Uh, thirty-three point seven five, zero, seven, three, one, six, six cents per hour. Eighty hours per pay period, effective date, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This was actually a compensation increase for education. Uh, pre-release center Judy Lowman, resident supervisor, union, full time, nineteen dollars, twenty cents per hour. Eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. In the prison, Jacob York's Correctional Officer, Union, part-time, twenty-one point four two, four, five cents per hour. Not to exceed one thousand hours annually. Anticipated transfer date of May eleventh, twenty twenty-five. And then in resource management, Gary Stagger, Deputy Director slash Operations Manager slash Acting Director of Resource Management. Pay grade thirteen, full time. This is eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four point two, zero, four, five cents per year. Eighty hours per pay period, effective date, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Your motion except first slide.
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, question.
Yes.
The adult probation position, the acting bill release supervisor in resource management. Uh, the acting director of resource management. That is a five percent increase according to policy based on them accepting those responsibilities. And once those people are, are, uh, new hirings take place, that five percent goes away.
Yep, yep, so the, yep, resource management, Gary, uh, staggered, that was a, a five percent for acting currently as we await the transition and, and hiring. Uh, so he stepped up into that role. So as soon as someone new is hired, that falls back down just temporary increase, um. While he accepts the additional three duties that he's doing.
Okay, the adult probation, uh, acting bill supervisor is, uh, currently just temporary.
Yes, and, and this one that's listed on here, um, because we did the five percent, uh, maybe three, four weeks ago. For her, uh, acting bail release supervisor, uh, this one is a one percent increase for her education level, uh. Which actually coordinates very well with both jobs that she would be doing.
Okay.
She has and this one as well.
All right, so this doesn't have to do with her being the acting bill supervisor.
This one does not.
Has to do with the one percent.
Yes.
Increase for a, yeah.
Yep.
Certification she received.
Yeah, yeah, her master's degree.
Okay, great. Okay, well, congratulations. Okay, great. Okay, uh, we have motion, we have a second, all of your side. Uh, hi. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward with action items, six point one, Nikki.
Um, commissioners, I have for your approval, the engagement letter with Baker Tilly for the recreation authority audit. Um, in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred dollars and the recreation authority will be paying this.
Uh, motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All their side.
Uh, hi.
Next item, six point two, Forrest Lehman.
Good morning.
How's Forrest today? Morning.
I'm all right, but boy, this meeting has been all downhill since the introduction of the P A one call princess. I mean, we peaked too soon. And I, I'm not going to be able to turn it around.
Most of us peaked too.
Yeah. Uh, my, my item today is a memorandum of understanding with Mattorsville Borough. This is accessibility at polling places. Uh, we got a true master craftsman put this M O U together. Chris, right there. And, uh, what, what this is arranging is for the borough to undertake accessibility improvements at its facility, uh, and accessible space. Uh, some sidewalk and paving work. Uh, the county would reimburse them on the back end. So we had our architect out there with the borough engineer. And we got to a plan that everybody's comfortable with, that checks the boxes we need for our settlement agreement and that they're, they're comfortable with the approach. And once we know the final amount, then they would, they would let us know, but the estimate is eleven, eleven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All their side.
Uh, hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, six point three, Nancy.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, juvenile probation is asking for an amendment to our adult five village agreement to add the program of security detention. Uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five, that'll also be in future contracts with them. And the current per diem rate for this twenty-four, twenty-five is seven forty-four and seventy cents.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments for Nancy? All their side.
Uh, hi.
Thank you, commissioners, have a good day.
My next item, six point four through six point five is Ken.
Where you can.
Or question.
Uh, before you, um, six point four is a change order, uh, for the corner build. What it is, is that we had a main drain line, uh, that was mislocated in the drawings. Um, so our, um, interceptor tank and our generator needs to be moved out several feet from where it's at. Okay, see what's going to happen with it.
Okay. Speech to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All their side.
Uh, hi.
Uh, six point five is another change order, uh, for the corner. Um, and what it is, is that it was missed on the drawings, um, when it was made, when it was, they were put together. Um, we have a drain line that needed to be removed, another one needed to be widened. And then the concrete slab, uh, needed to be, um, tore out and flattened out, um, for an office.
So I make the motion.
I'll second.
All their side.
Uh, hi.
And while you're here, we got Forrest here, same time. Uh, could you give, um, a little bit of an update on the first floor and expansion for Forrest? And Forrest, you have questions for him?
Okay, yes, um, the first floor is going well. The demo is complete, um, as we all know that the, um, vaults and the safes have all been removed. Uh, we are in the process of ordering materials. Um, the door area and so forth for the, um, voters, new storage area, um, has been cut in. Uh, we're just, um, ordering materials. Once that comes in, we will start creating that space next week. Hopefully, within several weeks, we will have this space, um, up and running.
Okay, we're should be questions.
No, I'm, I'm just thrilled. I mean, our maintenance guys did the original build on voter services when we came over to this building over ten years ago. And did a fantastic job and I know it will be great this time too. Thank you, man.
Yeah, all great, thank you. We're excited about more space for you. Cause you definitely need it.
I'm thrilled, I mean, we've had stuff on the floor for five years and now we're going to get it. You know, we're going to get it up, we're going to get it organized and, uh, and it's going to be fantastic. Great.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Ken, thank you. Yep.
And the last item is me, um, that's about to approve the sponsorship agreement with Williams for crosscutters and one thousand, five hundred and fifty cents. This is for advertising and the, uh, for giving recycling.
Okay, we've done this in the past.
We have.
Okay. Um, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Their side.
Uh, hi.
Will this come out of their, their project?
It will somewhere.
Okay.
Come tell you.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner comments?
What do you think?
Yes.
Go ahead. Um. I'd just like to start out, I'm, I'm so proud to have a Lake Coming County manufacturing company that donates back to our community to support the nonprofit. I was able to be part of the announcement last night where Mealy Manufacturing presented a check to the Y W C A to assist them in their efforts to protect. And house abused women and children. Uh, we've had them in here several times, they do a great job. Uh, this generous gift from Mealy Manufacturing was in excess of one million dollars to help support that cause. When Lou and Nicole Mealy realized that they were fortunate enough to make these types of donations, they started immediately. This made me think, is it, is it upbringing? Nicole's parents, Rocky and, and Reba taught her well. And to take care of, about, of people and care about people and help people. Lou's parents, Lou and, and Marie Mealy, along with family members like his uncle David, and, and still the same values in him. You know, we do all kinds of training, I'm not sure that we need D E I training or harassment training in this world. But we need the fundamentals, just treat people nicely, care about others. And it definitely showed last night at, at that function. Again, I would thank Lou and Nicole Mealy and the entire Mealy group for their kindness to our community. Um, you know, anything I have is happy Easter.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire board, we want to thank the Meleys. That building is absolutely beautiful if you've been in it, Y W C A, the history of it. Now, but there is a lot of updates that need to be done. G A C system. We know the prices are evolving as we look to update some of our buildings, it's millions of dollars. And, uh, you know, we have, you know, women that are abused living there. And, uh, you know, to have the, the heat, the air conditioning with their kids. And other. Updates in that building is, is essential, so. Want to thank, uh, nearly thankfully for this generous gift. And, uh, they'll go to great use.
They had, they had a testimony even just from one of our employees last night that, that used that facility, you know, years, years ago. Um, you know, and how, how it was so helpful to them, you know, and I think they get people daily. And it's, it's a hard thing for a, of, of, an abused wife or, or mother to leave that abuse. And get out and really, in a lot of situations, have nowhere to go. And I know we've, we've, we've helped with, with the Y W C A as a county, but nobody can help to the extent of, of a million dollar gift and that's just awesome.
You know, previous to when I was over probation, I handled the assault case load. Before I became deputy over there. And, and the victims that come in and their stories, they're often, they're afraid to leave because they have nowhere to go. And they just feel hopeless and have an asset of the wise options in our community to assist those women is, is critical. Uh, I've served on the auxiliary board over there for wise options. And they do fantastic work. Try to help these, these women and some men. Obviously get their lives back in order and, and to get away from abusers. This abuse is, is horrific, physical, emotional, financially. You know, the. All that they trying to. Exercise over, over the spouse or, or partner is, is, uh, evil and terrific. And, uh, have that broken and have them know there's hope, people in the community that care about them. And, uh, want to assist them, get away from this and live a normal life and watch your kids. Grow a normal life and have love around them is great.
Right. Now, it, for, there's lots of times I hear in, you know, the, the rest of society where people live their comfortable lives. And, and the first response is, why don't they just leave? And like Mark said, lots of times they don't leave because they have nowhere to go. And, um. It is a wonderful gift, right? I have a comment here, but nothing I can say is as important as, as that, uh, what the Meleys did for the communities, I believe. Um, there is a, I just saw it on Facebook the other day, while you're, while you're off over Easter weekend and you've got five minutes to spare. Um, there's a monologue that, uh, Bill Margie. Is a political commentator who's very liberal, who just famously, if you're in those circles, went, was invited to the White House by Donald Trump. And, um, they have gone back and forth at each other now for when the Trump is eight years, right? And, um, and he gave a monologue about what his experience was at the White House and what his experience was with Donald Trump. And it was fascinating. Um, you know, we work together every day from different parties. And we do a really good job of staying in our lane and focusing on what our job is. And, um, and, and I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent of our job has nothing to do with political party. It's just about trying to make our local community better. Um, but, you know, the bigger you get into the, the national politics and it gets, it gets so much more divisive, um, than we see here in the county. But, um. To see these people, you get the loud people from each side, from each party, they're really loud and they're really, you know, dyed in the wool. And, and they say they want to work together, but their versions of working together means the people from the other party come to us and join us. But you get these quiet, most of society is quiet in the middle. Um, they're not really that politically active, they just want, they want government to do what's right and they want government to do a good job. And it, it's so, most people want us to all sit down at the table and just try to figure it out. But you get the parties and, and they don't want you to sit down at the table. And I just read again today that my party wants, or at least an article, that they want Fetterman to resign. Cause he's working with McCormick and he's doesn't do everything that Trump does. So, um, it is a fascinating commentary with Bill Mar, and I'll just say this. Mar went in, he had his staff print out all the insults that Trump has thrown at him. Over the last like eight years and he had them printed out and he went in and he asked Donald Trump to sign it for him and he did. And he just talked about how pleasant the, the, the meeting was, how honest the meeting was. Um, how they walked in disagreeing, they walk out disagreeing. But they had a very cordial, functional conversation. And, um, yet from both sides, there was liberals that didn't want Bill to go and then there was repub. And, um, yet from both sides, there was liberals that didn't want Bill to go, and then there was Republicans, conservatives that didn't want Trump to have the meeting. And it is, it, it was just a microcosm of what we need to get back to. And because these are two very famous people, I, I think it exemplifies to all of us. That we, the best of us disagree civilly and intelligently and still can get along and work together after we disagree. Because there are certain things that we disagree on, but we agree on the job that we have to do, and we come here to do it every day. And, and we do it, uh, friendly and cooperatively and to the best of our ability. And if, um, I, so I encourage you, it's Bill Maher, you can just Google it, it wouldn't be very hard. Bill Maher, Donald Trump, and he gives a very open, honest, five-minute monologue about their meeting. And it's fascinating, and it's, it's, um, and I saw it, the person who, who I saw it on Facebook is a friend of mine who is a staunch conservative. And he shared it because, uh, you know, he coming from the other side feels the same thing. If, if we just all work together, get along, it's, we don't only have to like the people that we agree with. Anyway, that's the end of my.
I think they both tie together excellent. The theme of just treat people nicely. That's it. We don't, we don't need everybody reminding us every day, just need to do it as, as human beings.
You know, one thing I, I haven't heard about that, and one thing that was interesting that he had said is Obama and Biden, he, he could be himself.
He had the kind of. Clinton.
Or Clinton.
Yeah, he said, I had a much more open and honest. He said, I felt more comfortable being as open and honest as I was with Trump than I think I ever would have been with Obama or Clinton. So there was no, he fired every question at him, he didn't. And he's like, he never yelled back at me, sometimes he smiled and nodded and, um, even said, I think there's a point, I don't remember what it was, but Trump was telling him about a program he put in, he was putting in place. And he said, yeah, Obama already had that program put in place, and you voted to get rid of it. And he said, and Trump just nodded and smiled, and he took it, and it was, but it, it's fascinating. It was fascinating, but it just shows the word, we're, I don't know, we, we're, we agree on a lot, even the people that disagree on a lot still agree on a lot. And, um, you know, and I, I tell people I sit in, because most of the meetings I sit in with elected officials, I'm the only Democrat. And I say, we'll sit in meetings, we're talking about local things, about levees or about, you know, trying to, trying to generate local business or housing or whatever. That everyone at the table will agree on every, even though we're from different parties. Because in that topic, you know, we agree on a lot, and you take the staunchest conservatives and, and the most ardent liberals, but there's lots of things we, we agree, we need to fix the lefty or floods. And, um, so anyway, it is, I, I, I bet it's only five minutes long, but I thought it was riveting. And, um, if you're bored over the holidays, which I know no one's ever bored, but if you're bored and you need five minutes, um, it really, America could learn a lot from this.
Thank you. Any public comment? Yes. Hold on, please. Morning.
Good morning. Yes, Terry Lockley from Munsee Township, and I really enjoyed everything that you stated there. Was very, I think we agree, many of us agree to disagree, you know, and can work together. So I, I appreciate that. Quick, I am here to represent residents from Munsee Township, and, uh, I had put in a right to know, um, a month ago concerning, um, I was wanting, well, some of the residents wanted to know. By, uh, okay, I'm requesting access to any communication, including solicitation of potential additional funding request from Lycoming County Government, its agents or assigns uh, relative to pursuits by Fanvest, Prime Corps, and any of its agents, subsidiaries, or affiliates in further development of the former Lycoming Mall properties in Munsee Township. Uh, so I'm wanting to know, um, you know, and that was denied. So I just received this last week that it was denied, and so I then submitted, um, on the request of the residents saying they would like me to submit another one. Uh, so here I did, I requested another one last Tuesday. I'm requesting any and all correspondence between Lycoming County, its agents and assigns that relate to any requests for loans, grants, assistance, and financing. Letters of introduction, any applications for that is outlined herein, emails, letters, et cetera, from the entities, developers, owners of the former Lycoming Mall properties, now owned by Fanvest, Prime Corps, or any of its agents or its subsidiaries, to include individual partners, any documents and correspondence that outline requests for funding, loans, grants, et cetera, that pertain to securing any manner of funding over and above the original five million dollar loan to said developer and its agents, assigns should be included in notation made as to the specific purpose of the funding request. I didn't know it. Oh, yeah, the, uh, this request does not include any documentation relative to the original loan package secured by Fanvest and granted by the Lycoming County Commissioners. So, um, we're due to have a township meeting, um, and so they suggested I come here and ask you personally if you can not, um, answer if Fanvest or any of their subsidiaries in any way has sought to seek more funding or, you know, whatever those words were that they put together. Is there any way that?
When did you?
The twenty third, next week, next Wednesday. So, and when I put this in last Tuesday, they said, I need another thirty days to answer this. So they're like, you know what, why don't you go up there and approach the men? And, uh, so here I am, is there any way you can, um, answer this question?
Well, I don't, I do know at the end of the day, like, all that we do give to them will be, will be very public, like they're all the monies that are given and how, whether it's a loan or whether it's, how it's structured. Certainly be public. I don't know that, I don't know the law and like behind the deceit. The, the discussions that have back and forth, I don't know how much that is, is, um, I don't know what the law is on that, but I do know that all the money will be clearly laid out, like what was a loan, what was a grant, what's going to be paid back, how it's going to be paid back. Um, because that's all taxpayer knowledge, so, um, but beyond that, I don't know.
Okay, well, my understanding, it's public, it's federal money, that's what we're asking, and it should be given to the people. It's should be transparent, should be known, I don't think it should be a question.
The money that's at, the money that's given will be transparent. I think they're asking.
We're asking if they're asking right now for another.
Things are, are still in a negotiation stage.
Yeah, we don't want to know whether it's complete, we just want to know if they're even asking. So has there been a request put in? Can you state that?
I, I would state at this point, all, all that's there is the original five million dollar loan. At this point, until they have a development plan, there is no other request.
But we're not asking for a, we just want to know, did they see, have they put any application in for any other?
They have no request of us for any, any additional financial, because they don't have a finalized plan, so they really can't come to us and ask.
They're on the record, there is no, like, I think we were here, uh, weeks ago, and you, you know, there's so many rumors. As you know, I'm running for township supervisor, and it is, and I thought, you know what, when they say go up there, I thought, I shall ask these men, you know, and come in and get.
There's a lot of rumors.
Correct, and that's why.
Right now, all we can say is we have a five million dollar loan, and they have a payment starting, I believe, in June.
Correct, and you can say on the record, nothing else, they have not sought.
We will be sitting and waiting for our first payment.
Okay, so no other funds?
And, and the question, the question is, this is a legal, theoretical question. If, if an entity comes to us, X Y Z company comes to us and asks us for money, and we deny that money, is it? Does the public have the right to know that they asked?
Correct.
They have, they have a right to documentation that might be accessible to the public. That's why this particular, I have not seen this, but because of the voluminous nature of it, just from what I've heard, generally what has to happen is we have to go through any documentation or communications that may be there that, and then review and see what is releaseable to the public. Not all documents are releaseable to the public. There is, there's a number of exceptions that are outlined in the right to know laws. And depending on what those communications are, we have to review them and make sure that. So that's why the thirty day extension, because of the nature of the request, I'm presuming that's why the thirty days was extended for not only the opportunity to review the county's records, but also the opportunity for the solicitor's office to review and determine what is, can be released and is, is it accepted material. And the reason I ask is, this is, it's, it's an interesting, because like I just got a call from a, a local county resident asking, um, they're, you know, they're in a certain personal financial situation, and they were asking whether any programs that can assist that. So, like, is that? Is that a, a, a private conversation that someone's just asking general? Or does the whole public have a right to know that someone called and asked? So there is that, like, at the end of the day, like we said, all the money is going to be totally transparent. We're not trying to do anything shady or underhanded, like, we, we are above board with all this stuff, and we want everyone to be, um, on the same page and at least clear and understand. Question is what discussions go back and forth that are that the public has a right to know about and the public doesn't? Because there are certain, like, I feel like the conversation that the lady called me is kind of asking, is there anything that can help us? And I kind of feel like that's a private conversation, because it's a private situation. If we ended up helping and there was money given, then it becomes public because it's through a program, whether it be through staff or whatever. But, um, it is an interesting conversation as to, um, rights to know, and I'm certainly not a right to know expert, that's why we have attorneys. But, um, we assure you, the rumors that we hear that we're trying to sneak in low income housing is one of the ones we're, we're not trying to sneak anything. There's nothing to be stuck. At the end of the day, we, we think it's going to be a good program that everyone's, that lots of people are excited about, obviously not everyone's going to agree, but, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's convoluted, it's, 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 it's complex, it's not an easy yes, no question in a lot of the cases. But, um, there is, we, we don't, um, we don't want to make anyone angry, and we're not trying to be, um, we're not trying to be sneaky in any way.
We're not trying to be secretive, but the negotiations are so complex.
I understand that in the residence, you know, this is a fire, fire topic.
Oh, we know.
And, and as you, as we put the right to know in, and you don't, and, and just like, I think you, the last meeting we were here two weeks ago, you were stating to our current township supervisor, um, you know, that there's things going on. Well, we saw the article that was written that you, you, Mr. Vazina, stated that, yes, there is a, you know, affordable housing, um, on our website. Other two township supervisors have it there, and they're stating, you know, affordable housing, Jason Think has stated that, Aura has stated that. It is time and time again, but yet, when we state, nobody wants to say, yes, well, it's in writing, you know? And, and it was from you, even though you signed a non-disclosure, you know, but it seems like you're giving bits and pieces. And then when we hear stuff and we ask to, um, have verification, then it's, it becomes difficult, and, and you can't come forth with us. And, um, like I say, that's really, it's kind of almost feeding the fire, where I'm here to say, please help me put that fire out as they steam that meat.
Um, and, and again, because it's so complex, it's not like, they don't come in and have a plan that we have hidden in the back that we're like, we know all these answers. There would be several dominoes that go in, now, if we can do this, then we'll do this. If this doesn't work out, if this negotiation doesn't work out, then we have to go in a different direction. And one of the aspects of many of the plans was, um, to put housing, some sort of housing. Now, whether that ever comes to pass or not, because there, there have been, there are multiple variations of the plan depending on how. But it, it is one of the things that's being discussed, and one of the reasons it was discussed is it's one of the things like coming county. But we also have to know at the end of the day that the township has, has zoning regulations in the day of the final call. We can't just come in and say, this is what you're going to do. So we're, we're gonna want everyone on the same page, but there is not, we do not have a finalized blueprint, and we're hiding from people.
Correct, so and when you state, you're obviously then speaking with Fanvest, and you, you're saying, oh, there's some certain things that, you know, they're talking housing. Um, how come they don't have these conversations with the township?
Because that's not where they're negotiating.
They're not at this point, they're not at that point.
Right, but I think of what they're saying to you should be said to the township to say, hey, we're trying to thinking or.
What they're talking to us right now about is not housing.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's. What they're talking to us about right now is something that will, will change this county. Okay? And it's important that we let the negotiations go in that process. Okay, they're almost there. They're short, they're very close, but we gotta let that. Okay, what, if it comes down to something that's against zoning, which this is not against zoning, okay, they will then come to the township, that's why you have your zoning. That's a battle that you'll have to take up at that time, if they go down that road. But what they're bringing to us right now is not that. Okay? At the end of the day, when this entire project is done, there'll be hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs plus increase the tax base. They're looking at a two hundred million dollar project, where everything's finalized, but everything's done. They're looking at two hundred billion dollar project. That's going to lower sewer rates, water rates, you're going to have jobs, you're going to have the mall vibrant again. It's going to be someplace where people are going to want to go. Okay, I'm going out of St. Andrew right now, and it breaks my heart. What's down there now breaks my heart. That's not what our community wants. All I hear is people complaining about the mall is gone. Right?
Well, I don't think our township, we're not complaining that the mall is gone.
No, what I hear, though, from the community is the mall is gone. You gotta bring something here, you gotta bring something here, gotta bring something that people want to go to. They want to, they want to use, they want to experience. Okay, that's what we're trying to do.
What the voice I hear from Munsee Township being there is, um, the developers came, came to our county, got five million dollars. It's not even the talk about what's happening in the mall, it's about the tax. You gave them five million of taxpayers' money, that's our money. Second of all, you find, signed a disclosure, ah, that was hot. You aren't disclosing to us. Now we're hearing in all the, the papers, I think I have twenty articles in the last two, year and a half. Development is going to be housing, whoa, what are we, what are we doing? That's going to change. You say all it's going to bring to Lycoming County, but it's also going to cost a lot of money, more fire, more police. Okay, that's going to cost the township, so we just want to know, and I'm not even here to ask that. We're here saying, you gave them five million, then they came and got the Lerdah, ten years, seven years, six years, it's still affected us. We just went up a point five mil, okay, in our taxes. Now we're hearing the same developers that we can't disclose, what's going on, and it's all going to be good for us. Are they asking for more money of taxpayers' money? That's what we're looking at here.
Just said, the, the tax increase didn't come from us.
Oh, no, so we're saying, this is what's already happening in our area, and what you're doing here affects us.
Right, correct.
And we just want answers, and then when we find out, whoa, and now we, well, I was here the last two weeks ago, and you said, hey, we were in a deficit, and you took out a ten million dollar bond, and now you're having a reassessment. Again, that affects us plus locally, our taxes went up. So that's where we're at, we aren't talking, oh, I hope it's someplace we can go, I hope it's going to have some entertainment. We're saying, we hope we can survive and we can live, and our taxes don't go up. That's.
The county has not raised their taxes in ten years.
We don't care how long it's been, can we afford to do it?
Yes, yes, we can, yes, we can. We need to attract things, we're in rural America. Okay, we need to attract what's going to bring people to this county.
But I thought you said we have so many people, we need housing, uh, that keeps going. What's the statistics, where's the data? Um, I know for the Pennsylvania State Township just showed us, uh, three weeks ago, said from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four in Lycoming County, how much we've increased in population? Zero, when we hear when Fanvest wanted to come, you were saying, we need this because we have people leaving. We need people to be brought back within six months. You're telling us, oh, now we need housing, we need housing, because, well, what, nothing's taken place at the mall, so.
We have been informed by the realtors and developers, it's not just here, it's across the nation. It's across the world. Okay, I just, just listen to Greenland, they have a shortage of housing over there, we have a shortage of housing, it's across the U S. There's a shortage of housing, we need market rate housing.
So you can show me that. So you can show me that. When we just had this, I didn't bring the documentation stating for townships that nothing's increased in population.
When we met with the developers and the realtors, he's a realtor. When we met with them through the ARPA meetings, that was what they emphasized to us. Okay, we had one realtor saying, if you give me fifty ranches, I can sell them tomorrow. I can sell them tomorrow. That was one of the prime premier realtors in this area.
I like the name.
Well, I mean, when you, the the documentation is there and and school populations are dropping everywhere, in every school district. In the air like uh when I graduated from Montourville, the year before me had two hundred and six kids and now they have a hundred and forty. I I heard the kindergarten, the entering kindergarten class had a hundred and ten. Um, I know Montgomery's way down, Williamsport is less than fifty percent of what it was when my parents were there. So, yes, if if you look at a map of the not just ours, Union County, Northumberland County, Tioga County, I think the only county in our region that went up at the last census was Center County for State College. But everyone is losing population.
So then why's the need of the housing? Where's the big deficit?
Because because if people have smaller families, um they're not building new ones, they're all dilapidated houses that are not being reused. Um, people are having less children, like Andrew said that um now that post covid, we're having older retired people that are leaving um more expensive areas and coming to cheaper areas like this. And they're not in the workforce because they're retired. Um, so it it's still, yes, the not, if you drive through Montourville or Bunce here, Boyan's Park or whatever, the number of houses are still the same. But the but the school population is way down. And I know cyber school has some to do with that, but it doesn't have, there there's not forty kids in each grade in cyber school. So um we do need in rural Pennsylvania, not just like coming county, but in rural Pennsylvania, these places like Chancaluna to to bring uh innovative jobs and what we're trying to do with the mall. Uh, but to do that, we also need these housing developments, like the one when Tools Run was built in Montourville years ago and then the other side of the road and the ones in Loyalsuck that are up on the hill um when they built, they're building these four hundred thousand dollar, five hundred thousand dollar houses. And we're like, well, who's ever going to buy those? And they're all and then they throw those townhouses in where the old school was, what was the old school's name?
Right there, Sheridan.
Right, where that school was and they're all sold.
And those places sold immediately.
Immediately, immediately. So um, yeah, if you could put two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ranch homes somewhere, it would be gone in a day.
There's a lot of old housing stock in the city. I mean, all the, I live in a neighborhood where all the houses are a hundred years old. And eventually they're going to be replaced uh because if you have new families coming in. So it would be came in, it was different fifteen years ago, but someone comes in now, they got a kid. They're going to look at that house and think, this isn't going to be enough. You know, this house is too small and they're they're looking at, you know, the schools, they're looking at, do they hold up their phone and have a part of the reception? But the but the housing is a is a part of it and it's very old stock that once that house is gone, now you need something to replace it or your housing is going down even if you're trying to get more.
Terry, I've heard about the fire and police. The mall was there, had thousands of people. The fire and police serviced it. Okay, they're going to be able to service this. They're going to be able to service.
Um, well, like I said, our taxes already came up and uh you know, has been raised and we realize that.
Taxes went up.
Well, they had raised it.
Whose taxes?
In in the Muncie Township.
Okay, that's that's.
Correct. My point is because of it, people are now really awake. And it uh we just realized in our own own police right now, just doing what we are with the loss of the mall, three hundred thousand dollars a year we spend as Muncie Township.
The loss of the.
So now we're saying something.
The key thing, the loss of the mall causes things to go up. I explained to you, the sewer rates have gone up. That's one of the reasons why the sewer rates went up because of the loss of the mall.
Well, I I questioned that, Scott, and that's not, that's not accurate. That does not.
Terry, did you reduce your, did you reduce your police force since the malls been closed? Have you laid anybody off in your police department?
No.
Exactly.
But that's what the the residents are saying. What are we doing? We can't afford this.
Because you did reduce your staff, but you've lost all the business and the income.
Correct.
So you needed to reduce your staff and your police department. That's why your taxes are going.
So if we can't afford right now without any residents or the mall, which we may have the target, a lot of that was at the mall, is just up on the strip mall there. But the point being is if we can't afford the three hundred thousand a year with two and you're saying, oh, we're going to have to increase because now you put housing, that's what our concern is, you know.
Terry, you you know, I I like and I respect this. Let me just clarify a couple of little things for you to help you.
Good.
As as you're and and I, you know, I hope if you get elected township supervisor, the one thing you do is 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 have an open mind to to what's going on. But the first thing, I was a township supervisor when when the previous board announced that loan. Can't say I was in favor as a township supervisor. Um, but it also didn't come out of like coming counting tax dollars, it came out of the the budget monies that were for infrastructure and for growth because of covid. So we'd have lost that money back to the federal government. So it did come out of taxpayer money. So that made me feel a lot better.
It would have gone back to the general fund?
No, it went back to the federal.
Yeah, I'm not wrong.
Yeah, it wasn't technically our month. We had to spend it. We couldn't keep it. So so that's just one thing for you for your arsenal. Um, the other thing, you know, you you we talked about the housing and that's just one of the things that got blown up that your municipality is very upset. They don't want housing there. And and again, those become your decisions as a community. We already talked about that. Um, but you said, you know, they talked to the county and they did talk to your supervisors and they did. All your supervisors are invited to their facility in State College, which was identical to what they are saying they'd like to build down here. Not a single one showed up.
Oh, no, they did. Yeah, it was front page when when was there.
There was one, it was.
And and then Denise, uh, she was not aware and then she went up separately.
Senior housing facility.
That's a senior.
Correct.
So that's what it was. And they were invited and I believe two showed up.
So that's that's the only thing that we've seen as 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 a as a county. Um, and the current thing that they're working on, that we did sign non disclosures, so we can't disclose who that retailer is because we signed the non disclosure report. Um, but that hasn't gone anywhere. So until they have something, which that's all Fan Best having to do, their lease agreements and their their due diligence, that has nothing to do with us as a county or even you guys yet at this point, until they can say, hey, I have this retailer. Now, the retail, I think, is just going to be allowed in here. I don't think the housing would be allowed. I'm not sure about if they do a hotel, but all those things are rumors. Hotel, housing, and it's all going to determine by Fan Best of what they can actually get leases for. If they can't get this first lease, who knows what they're going to do? And that's why I say from our standpoint, we're committed to a five million dollar loan, that we're waiting for our first payment to show them. That's really all we are as a bank. Um, so if they get a signed agreement, will they come and ask for other? I'm sure I'm sure they'll knock on the state legislators doors and federal, I'm sure they'll knock on every door they can.
You're saying you wouldn't be surprised if they're seeking more funds, is that?
It wouldn't shock me if at at the end of the day, they.
Oh, correct. It doesn't shock us either. We just wanted proof, like your thing, you know, to squash all the talk.
Yeah, but at this point, they don't have anything. They don't have anything finalized. And of course, they've not brought anything to you guys as a planning department. So until that's done, like I wouldn't be, I mean, even if they were sitting right here and saying, can I have another five million dollars? And we're like, no, what are you doing?
But that would be access something we would, that's what we want access to. That's all we're asking.
So at this point, all they, all that we have communications for the most part with them is what they're trying to do. And that goes back, I mean, we signed a non disclosure, it's over a year ago.
The last April.
You know, so I mean, to me, I sit here, you know, no different than your community going, well, what are they really doing? But we don't really have those answers. But it starts, it still starts with you guys, you know, so I I hope that you know, if if you win your election and you're there, that you you can look at these guys honestly and say, what do you want to do? And how do we help you do it that's cost effective and smart for us? You're not alone when it comes to conversations about you know, I mean, obviously you have a volunteer fire department, not the jail made donations to them, you know, we did that in Low Side Township. I had to, I had to raise, we gave a five thousand dollar monthly stipend to our fire hall. I raised it to ten thousand dollars a month when I was there because they weren't making it. They have less volunteers, they have less ability to purchase equipment, you know, we had to help them with all that stuff. Um, you know, you get, you guys have a police department, it's something you gotta gotta evaluate.
Correct. That's what the whole talk is.
Right. City Williamsport is going to be in the exact same position. They're, they gotta evaluate. Um, you know, I know many years I I communicated with John Dorn, who was the mayor of Montourville. That was our topic of conversation every time, police department, how's it cost us? I was fortunate in Low Side Township that we didn't have it. We we had state police coverage. So we were very fortunate there, but I I I just think that the rumors have your community stirred up. And I think if you can take a level mind back to them, especially like the loan, you know, the loan would have went back to the federal government. So they, we didn't lose anything as county taxpayers. Um, you know, and worst case scenario, say they don't create anything. We're the lien holders. We're going to take that one.
Yeah. We're 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 with the bank as first lien holders. We made sure we protected the county's interest. We're adamant about that when we signed that, that we were, along with the bank, we were the first lien holders. That was critical because if something happened, we were going to have that land.
I mean, these guys are good developers. I I worked with them in Low Side. They are good developers. But it all takes time, you know, and and retail today, I mean, I think it's always up in the air. So, you know, they they could have a year ago really thought this retailer was coming and maybe today their retailer is going, hey, you know what? The economy's not there. We're not going to sign a lease and but we see not to be political, but what what happens with Donald Trump and the tariffs? I don't know what's holding anything up or what the conversations are, but I know that there is nothing finalized.
Yeah, we don't sit in with those talks.
Yeah, that's all with them.
That's with them and the and negotiations. We had nothing to do with that, nothing.
But you would be aware if they have sought any more grants or funding, you would be, that's again, that's my main focus here is just they said right now, go. We're not asking, what are they doing?
Right.
Tell us they, you know, the other two was last month.
We wouldn't be surprised on a on a project of this magnitude.
That they would. So you're not really surprised? So we should be, if if these people who are on the alert saying, hey, this is what I'm hearing. Uh, let's go see if they're asking for more money since they've not done anything.
And Terry, honestly, I think it'd be bigger than us.
Yeah.
It's going to be bigger than us at the county level.
Right. It's going to be state, possibly it'd be federal, but it's going to definitely be state.
Okay, you're thinking they're seeking to have that much funding.
Oh, they're going to go after, you know, and I don't know, like I just, I just um I just heard this last night when I was at my function last night for the first time that uh Governor Shapiro has something about Main Street. There's all kinds of new funding for Main Street for businesses. I don't know what that is. I don't know how much the funding is, but if that's available, I I wouldn't be afraid to say that Fan Best would go after a piece of that. So, so I think, you know, and again, I don't mean to speak for them. I don't mean to say anything derogatory, but I think that if there's funding available, they're going to try to get. Um, you know, one thing Senator Yala said, I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but he said it quite a few times where there's criticism of, you know, why did Genetti Hotel get two million dollars? His answer is because they asked and they had a plan and the plan was approved and the money was approved. So I I think it can happen, you know, I mean, again, do I a hundred percent agree that us taxpayers should be supporting private industry? Not really, but I can also see the flip side of that coin where if we don't help and we don't get it, we also don't move ahead.
Right.
I mean, whoever the retailer is, if Pennsylvania says, hey, we'll help you. So the guy says, then I'll open in Pennsylvania. Or Pennsylvania says, I won't help, and New York says, I will help. Hey, you know, one hour over the border, they'll take New York's money. So I I guess we're kind of in a stuck position.
Right. If we don't do something here, it will go elsewhere. And that's somebody else's game. And our loss, so that's that's why it's so critical that.
Um, well, just funny you mentioned that, Scott, because as you're talking, Mark, uh, Mr. Sorban, uh, up there at up at Patent Township, when this was all going on too, when they wanted the Lerdah and then they wanted to change our ordinance up in Patent Township, two thousand eighteen, Fan Best has purchased, I forget now, I think like eighty, ninety acres. And so I went up there, that was after our supervisors went up there to see the um uh, the housing that they were providing there or finishing. And uh I went to Patent Township, what exactly did you do? How, did they come in there and change ordinances? And that's a big township. Um, and she said, uh, yeah, but this is what we did and she gave us some information. And I said, well, can I go view? Can I go see what Fan Best, the big developers done? Okay. Well, she said, I could show you. Two thousand and eighteen, you know, what's there? And then this is just last year, two twenty twenty four, you know what's done there? All they put there is an oldies. This is what's concerned this, right? The residents said, get up there, go see, let, you know, the supervisors went up there. Well, what about we as the residents? So I went up to do it with other peoples and we're like, we're just uh very leery about what everybody says Fan Best, Fan Best. But that's what they did. They purchased this ground up there, big shakedown, titian stop what they were doing. Two thousand and eighteen, and this is a big township. They have their own cars with their name on it uh for Patent Township. So this is just really has got us concerned. Again, I'm not saying what are they doing? That's kind of past us now. We're like, oh, so they're even seeking more money after, you know, what we've been through. So right now, so we're just questioning the big developers. We know you got land two thousand and eighteen, nothing but an oldies.
This, I mean, this is a good, it's a good discussion. Um, I know we've kind of gone off, but this is a good discussion. Um, because it is such a hot button topic, but I know I talked to another developer, i- it was even in another state that was doing something and because of uh not political climate, but economic climate and because of material costs and because of availability of workers, they had, they had purchased something and they were ready to develop it and it was awful. And they purchased it and they're just sitting on it now, waiting, and they went to another project at another place where they could make money and they're waiting for the economic climate in that area to change. So that the project that they can, they can return to it. And the person told me, yeah, we'll go back there, but right now we can't go there and make money, but we can go here and make money. So we're going. So just because all they've done is oldies, you know, maybe there's a greater plan. And this is just, we keep talking about Fan Best, this is how all developers work, they're big time developers. My question, um, you know, Scott had talked about that that it breaks his heart every time he goes to Sam's Club. And when I pull in, I'm in the same way. We come in the same area and I'm just, God, I remember what the mall was and I see what the mall is now. And you drive by, I remember when it was Circuit City and, you know, you drive by the Best Buy and you see all these places that are empty and closed. If Fan Best didn't come in, then the building would become more and more dilapidated, the old structure of the mall. It would become more and more of an eyesore. And sooner or later, somebody would have to pay to clean that up. Wouldn't that be you guys?
Um, I'm assuming, I don't know, maybe it'll be you guys now that you've given the loan.
But now, but if this didn't come across.
But if if so, I mean, that's a lot in the meetings and they said, you know what, though? If uh would love to have um, you know, commercial stuff going on, but like people say, they tell us, oh, the mall is gone. Yes, the mall itself, but a lot of those same stores are up at the Charlie Bush's Plaza, up there with the uh Target, okay? What about you, Talk Dick's, Maurice's, um, you know, we've got Target now, but but a lot of those stores, a shoe department, all of that has just been displaced. Okay, so we're still monitoring it with the police and everything. Point is, they're saying, you know what? You put housing in there and what is it? Um, the revenue for every dollar that you bring in, it costs the taxpayer a dollar fifty, okay? So even if you want to say, hey, look what it's bringing in.
Where'd you get, where'd you get that?
Oh, that's statistics. Um, yeah, that's that's the, oops.
Sorry.
Oh, these are money. Yeah, I I can provide that for you if you need it, but that's my whole point. So the point is, is that would cost us, we get tax money, but it wouldn't cost us a thing.
It would.
Farmland, woodland doesn't cost the township.
He used to, but he used to get the mall.
I don't know, might be.
Here's part of it, but but my point was if it just dilapidated, became a pile of rubble, there, somebody's going to have to write a check to get rid of it. And it's the same thing, the same argument I have with the pajama factory. The pajama factory is better for the city being a lead, a living, breathing, functioning thing and we should work with it. Ball is better for your township and the county. If it is a living, breathing, functioning thing than if it's just a pile of bricks with overgrown weeds, which is where it would have gone eventually, seeds, abandoned buildings. Um, but we also understand when you take a cross section of of society or even Muncie Township, there are people there who would much rather see it be returned to green grass fields and have nothing and have no people in it because they're comfortable with their life and they don't want development. But as a, as an economic region, that our job is to create development and to create e- economic growth because that's the battle we're fighting against, we're losing against it. But yeah, I'm I'm sure that um that there are people that that would much rather have it be green grass and.
Um, well, let me, and I gotta go, uh, the, um, just that you're saying that, here is the mall. And we said Target Plaza, um, Chick-fil-A is coming, okay? Uh, who else? They're looking to do a uh. And we said Target Plaza, um, Chick-fil-A's coming, okay? Uh, who else? They're looking to do a, uh. A gas station and possibly a Starbucks. Okay. None of these, they're, they sent out letters and we're going to the township meeting. All this is building up around the mall. Okay? So we questioned that. How come? They've got Lerna. They got Lerna in there. Who are you bringing? You know, nothing's taken place. That's where they're looking at saying, you know what? Develop it. We're not against. You know, we're not backwards country people. Don't want progress because it's coming. We got the hospital. Okay, but the hospital also sits there. You know how much we've got in of taxes for that? They even do the pay in lieu of tax, the pilot program. Bilch. Okay, because we, as the township said, hey, okay, we understand it's starting to settle. You had to fix the windows, you know? So we're not, uh, against progress because progress is happening all around us. Okay? It's what's going on in there was the big call. Now we're like, no, we wanna know, are they even trying to get more money? What's happening? Okay? So it's not that, uh, we're against progress. It would just like to see it, you know? But if it is residential, that's a big one because that's gonna cost us. And we can't afford what we have now. And like I say, if you need that for every dollar of the residents that comes in and tax, it costs the township. A dollar fifty, um, I can get that too.
As I said to you before though, Terry, that the resident, because I don't, and I don't know your ordinance, but I don't believe that your ordinance allows. Residential in that particular property. So they will have to come in, whether it's a conditional use or it's a zoning change. And that becomes up to you as the township supervisor. If, if, if you're the supervisor at that point, those are your votes. Not our votes. Those are your votes to make the determination.
Right, but it's, it's been played on the paper and comments from you. That's what gets that fire going and we come and say, hey, is this true? Can you at least not say this? You know, those that are on the zoning.
Hats back, you're very nice, but the newspaper likes that type of argument.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't know that.
Gets out.
Okay.
You know, I mean, look at some of the stuff lately, you know, with, oh, the county got rid of their director and it was abrupt, but. You know, none of that was true, but it got in the paper.
I'm sorry, I will speak to Pat back there.
You know, Pat does a great, Pat does a great job with the articles that she puts in. But you gotta, you gotta get past the, the rumors. And remember that the stuff that's gonna happen there, your community's gonna decide. And another great point you kind of just made without probably making, made it. You know, where does Starbucks go? Could a Starbucks come over there? Maybe. But guess what? Whoever owns the piece of land where Starbucks is, made them a better deal. They got Starbucks. So that's what happens too with developers, you know?
But how can the Lerna? The Lerna was supposed to be the big, the big key to bring them in. So that's why we're questioning, why are you not?
Has a huge piece of land sitting there empty that has Lerna available. Break across Blaze odds and or on the highway. That's not moving, but it's got Lerna, you know? So Lerna, that isn't the end all to a business decision. So the business. Company coming in is making a decision too. Where do we wanna be? How do we wanna be? I, I remember, you know, a few years back, Longhorn Steakhouse flew into the area. And we wanted Longhorn Steakhouse and Loyalside where the Backs and Car Wash sits. We didn't get it. They wanted, uh, down by the mall.
Oh.
They wanted Longhorn Steakhouse. They didn't get it either. Uh, we wanted the Texas Roadhouse. It went to Seale and Screw before it came to Williamsport, it blew up side. Fan Fest brought it to Loyalside. Uh, so it takes the right connections, unfortunately. You know, that's where they say the rich get richer and poor get poorer. It takes the right connections, but it also takes the right piece of land. That the. End user, the Starbucks, the Wal-Wal, the Chick-fil-A wants. So until these guys at Fan Fest get something kicked off, if you were bringing Wal-Wal in. Where are you wanting? On the empty piece of land that's the dotted buildings or you want it over by Target? You want it over by Target? So those guys are winning. Fan Fest isn't necessarily winning some of the leases right now that they get things moving. But it, it really still, it goes back to that retailer. Where's the retailer wanna go? Um, I, I don't know if you guys, you know, by going up there and looking at the oldies and saying they didn't develop. Wonder what they do, but I can say in Loyalside, what they've done in Loyalside was Boltley, Texas Roadhouse. Five, take five, uh, oil place, the bank across Woodlands. And they also have owned and operated Bax and Bowling for ten to fifteen years.
So was that, was that all obviously before two thousand and eighteen? They had purchased that in two thousand and eighteen?
No, they just, I mean, uh, Texas Roadhouse was only a couple of years back.
Texas Roadhouse.
Only a couple of years back. Bank was just now, they got the bank, Members Mark or somebody. It's.
Car washing brand, you know?
Um, you know, the take the highest brand. Um, so they are doing things.
They have the Wal-Wal, they have the Chick-fil-A Williamsport.
Oh, yeah, the Wal-Wal. So they're doing their projects.
Yeah, and I see they just sold, um, there used to be Chi-Chis in front of all these.
That's a fact, yeah. So, so they got that thing come over and then they sold it off the bank.
Right, thus, we see that's in the paper, uh, two point two million. So we're like, oh, when they hear rumor. Or wanna verify that they're seeking more money, we're like, okay, what, what's going on? But I don't wanna waste your time. Just thank you so much. It'll be just about.
We don't think this is a waste of time. This is a good, it's a good discussion because people are talking about it. We, we know that. Well, we've talked about it. Okay, it's not healthy.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks, that's on record.
Here's my question. Why is that? When you say good.
It would cost, the cost of it to the township. Yes. That's, again, that is why they years ago put down. It is not for residential. Right now, that is not what they want. And like you say, it's not because they don't want progress because progress is happening all around, you know? But it's still that community, um, uh, you know, that field, that, uh, historical, you know? The house of many stairs, all that's there in, in Muncie Township. And it's not that we're looking to say, hey, we want some big development. We can do, like I say, that's all been commercial out there and that's the way they had it done several years ago. I don't know how long it's been. And that's what they still want. And, uh, like I say, running as township supervisor, um, I wanna hear the voice of the people and that's what they want. Thus, I'm here to say, um, you know, let's get some answers and you guys did a good job.
And again, all those decisions will be yours.
Right.
Yours and that's good. So if you guys are adamant that you don't want housing, you know, when Fan Fest brings it to you, die it.
Yep, that's what I was gonna say. If they bring housing to you, then that's up to you guys to decide. Right now, that's not our discussions.
Right. So.
Now, one thing I can just give you this, and maybe I shouldn't do this, I'm gonna oppose me. I'll give you my take as a, as a previous township supervisor. You know, if, if they come with a variance class and it goes to your variance board, your variance board has nothing to do with you as a township supervisor. If your variance board approves it. Can override them as a township supervisor, just for your own personal.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
That's your variance, your variance board is your variance board. And if your variance board denies it. Fan Fest also, or any developer, cannot come back to you as a township supervisor and say. I, I know you like this housing. Why can't you override them? They actually have to appeal to Pennsylvania State Court. Oh, the variance board is a completely separate board. Has nothing technically to do with your planning or with you as a township supervisor. Stand on their own and their decisions are final. Unless it's challenged in court.
All right, thank you for that. Always learning. Okay, thank you so much.
And here's, and I, again, no, you can say it because that is a very good point. At the end of the day, it comes to you guys. Um, but I, has there been any housing development in Loyalside you think has been detrimental to Loyalside? And I know when I was a kid, where Tools Run, this was nothing but fields. And now they have those nice new houses and then across the, across the way they have Katy, the Katy Lane development that is. And it has been nothing but good. It has brought nothing but, um, like. Higher end, as we talk about low income housing, it's the opposite. It brings higher end people into the community, gives them places to stay. So they're not doctors that live in Lewisburg or doctors that live in, you know, wherever else they would drive to. Um, I just, and, and I know, I know people who. Um, used to live on Grand Canyon Boulevard, which is the, you know, the, the high rent district of Williamsport. And they moved years ago and, and I said, and they moved to just another part locally and I said, why did you move? And they said, because we were afraid of the traffic that was going to be brought in. By these new developments at Loyalside and we were afraid of the traffic. Now, when I drive Grand Canyon Boulevard, do I think it's overflowed with traffic? I don't know, but they moved to a different place and that was their fear. And they went to, but, um, I couldn't imagine Loyalside now without those developments up on the north side. And I couldn't imagine the Toursville without Tools Run, the Katy Lane. And I, I don't think there's been anything but good that has come of it. So that's, that is again, my question of why? Why is this detrimental to, because down the road, schools are gonna need money. Because schools are gonna need refurbished and they're going to get older and, and then you're gonna have to go to your tax base. Get money for the schools and it ain't gonna get cheaper. And if your graduating class goes from a hundred to seventy, then you just got fewer and fewer people. Paying for more and more expensive schools and.
But if you bring people, you bring children, you now cost for the schools too. More teachers or, you know, whether you'd even need more, um, oh, just like what they're doing out there with the Dr. Kim property. Um, saying they want, there'll be enough that you could house four hundred residents. It's like, what is that doing? You know, um, thanks to some million dollars that was given from the county commissioner. And they're like, this is not, this, this, Mr. Resina, where do you live? Do you live out? Do you live in?
I live in Toursville. I live in the borough.
In the borough. See, when you live out, um, it's, it's a game changer. And that's where people have chosen. Many have come to retire there. They don't want all that city. Many of them come. That we were just fighting the solar panels out our way. They don't want that. They said, I've come here to spend money to retire because this is. This is what I'm looking to see. We don't want Williamsport. If, if, uh. If that was the, you know, the big utopia of the city and the people and the housing. Then you guys would be the breadbasket of, like, coming county. People want to live out like we do where it's farm, it's quiet.
And I, I get that. And I get that, but I also understand the people who can live out where it's comfortable and they can have farm and they can have land. Aren't complaining when their taxes go up a hundred and fifty dollars a year because they just write the check and they can afford it.
No, I don't know them. I need names of them because I'm one of them.
But it's the people, it's the, it's the people who are the moderate income that need. When you talk about needing more teachers, if you graduated off, if we graduated two hundred kids and now we're graduating a hundred and fifty kids. We didn't furlough teachers. We have smaller classrooms. We have smaller class sizes. And now we're at Toursville where we're in a situation where we're about to drop our physics department. Because they say our physics teacher's retiring and they say that the enrollment in the physics program. Isn't worth enough to hire another teacher. So they said, well, they're working on a, a group, a, a, a co-op with another school. The kids from Toursville who wanna take physics have to now get shipped to a Loyalside or Hughesville or some other place that have physics. So there are, there are reciprocal, yes, we can keep things the same as they are, but costs are gonna continue to go up. And if we don't bring in more population, then the, the fewer people are gonna be paying those higher costs. And there are trickle down effects to other aspects, like the kids that are coming through Toursville now are not gonna have physics. And my kids did because they were fortunate enough to get there. So why?
But aren't they combining that? I thought they've already been doing that, like Hughesville will take their children over or Muncie will take it over there, their shop classes. Many of this has been going on for several years.
The CTE programs do it. It, the, 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 what used to be, uh, BoTat is basically the lack of. They, they've done that for a while. Um, but.
Sometimes it's just not the interest.
But, but yeah, the school, it, there's no benefit to school districts to have a lower student enrollment. There's no benefit.
It passes more of the dollar back onto the property tax owners rather than the supplements that they get from the federal government. Or the state or the per student enrollments. That, that's the difference. The, the correlation to student decline in population is. It's less revenue from the state and the federal government and more of the. Revenues have to come from the tax, the real property tax base. That's the correlation. And that's what you, you need, why school districts actually want to keep that hot student population. At higher levels so that they're not having to put the burden back onto the actual real property owners.
Right. And, and homeschool, I just was at the, um, Montoral School there in the, the fall and I think they've had like. There, it's really, like you said about the homeschool and homeschooling is really picking up. I think they said, I thought close to two hundred children they have lost. Um, that you're now doing homeschooling, you know, so I'm just saying, I'm thinking there's a lot that goes into it, um, that plays it. And I don't think the people from Muncie Township, um, aren't educated, don't understand this. These are farmers. These are, uh, like you say, little homeowners as well. And, um, it's not against progress. We just don't want. More people, which is again, will increase the tax. We understand that. Um, so like I say, in progress, it's happening. It's not just against Fan Fest or, you know, it's, it's around us, like we said. Um, Chick-fil-A's coming, a, a gas station, uh, I think, uh, uh, Dunkin' Donuts. So anyways, that's, but, but thank you for your.
It is, it is a fascinating, and there's people on all sides. Um, go ahead, go ahead. Terry, when we, uh, we had the ARPA funds, we wanted to make sure they were generation. Okay, they were a one-time thing. We didn't use them right. They were gonna go back to the federal government. And so we wanna make sure that what we spend on all those generations. We met three nights in a row. I don't know if they were in a row, but we met three nights with township supervisors. City council, borough councils, we invited everybody to the table to hear what they were gonna do with their ARPA monies. And then how we could leverage the monies. Okay? We had one township came in and said, we're in God's country. I'm just down here to visit. We don't want anything. Leave us alone. Okay? Fine. We had our township saying, let's leverage money and see what we could do. Then we went to water sewer. And some of those projects that we did helped the water and sewer rates stay down. They had to go up a lot of them because they haven't been raised in a long time, but it helped them keep them down. Because some of the projects were a hundred years old, need to be updated. So we put monies towards that. Then we met with the, with the realtors and developers. They said there was a housing shortage. Out of that, of those talks, because we had several of them, with the realtors and the developers. We learned that developers could develop in this area because of cost. Okay? You get some of the infrastructure done, you get us to the curb, we can take care of the rest and then maybe we can make a profit. Because of the cost of goods and because of development. They were gonna go someplace else and develop. You have to bring incentives to your community to get things done sometimes.
Maybe you wanna ask the, the township or Hughesville Borough or Wolf Township because they don't want it. I think you, you understand that.
They don't want what?
They don't want the development. They can't handle it. You, they're.
But then, but then, and let me, so when they can't afford their sewer upgrades, what do they do?
Uh, did they state they couldn't?
What?
They do no wonder, what are they going to do now with the school? You're looking to bring in four hundred and like.
No, 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 we're not looking to build. We, since I, we've been here fifteen months. And one of the things that we keep hearing is these areas that have water and sewer issues. Because it's, it's old, it hasn't been kept up. Wasn't Hughesville one of them? So when, so when Hughesville has water and sewer issues that they can't afford, what do they do?
Well, yes, they should have said to you about the ARPA. Why didn't they ask for that?
No, that's what they do. That's what they did.
And I think everybody, everybody was a word of monies, but what I'm getting at.
The, but the point I'm making is when they can't afford their sewer and water, they come to us. And say, we can't afford this. Our people can't afford this. Bail us out. So one of the arguments from the other side is. It, don't tell us we don't want more people. Don't tell us we don't want more population to, to spread out the burden. But then when the burden hits you, when you need a new school, when you need water and sewer, when you need all this stuff and say, we, our population can't support it. Come write us a check. Because that's what happens. And it's not just, it's, it, Jersey Shore's had issues, Larensville's had issues, lots of places have had issues. But at the end of the day, it's hard to, it just seems to me challenging to say, we don't want growth. But, but then when our population can't afford it, you come bail us out.
Well, I think, but you're, you're using a scenario that didn't take place. If you had the ARPA and Wolf Township and Hughesville Borough didn't come and say, hey. I need that money because I believe it's been twelve years. They've been working to upgrade. And now they're saying, once we get this upgrade, isn't it going to be able to handle this? And you've given it to a developer. So obviously this, those two places didn't have to have this done. They were handling it well on their own. All of a sudden, in the paper, we see a million dollars. Here you've given it to a developer. Nobody else, and this is even land that no one else, every other farm where you said they don't want growth. Every other farmland that's not being used for farming has been had a development on it. This is the only area that nobody's touched because it's swamped and it's a mess. No developer.
Say that again? It's the only farm that hasn't been developed.
That has not been developed, that is, if there's farmland in Hughesville or Whoop, it's either been, it's actually being farmed. Or it has a development that has been put on it. This is the only piece of property that the, uh, Kim or Dewberry has now got the million dollars for. And that's what's got everybody in an uproar to think, what? How are you gonna develop? Because it is swamp land. It's gonna go into their homes. It's gonna go into the school where it's already wet. And now they hear bad enough and it's gonna be, how many housing? And it's gonna be. And now they hear bad enough and it's going to be, how many housing? And it's going to be enough for like a four hundred. And they're like, now how are we going to handle this? We're going to be underwater and. How are we going to do our school, policing, everything? So that's where I'm saying your, your, your scenario is, when people can't. Well, if you had the money and say, come get it, and none of them showed up.
We just don't have a mil-, we don't have a million dollars. They have to develop it first.
But they haven't. And Mr. Kim said, we said, hey, if you didn't have the money, that meeting, you didn't have the money? Would you be doing this? He said, yes. The we said, give it back. Or don't take it. Uh, we haven't heard anything from him. I don't believe he would. No other developer has ever local even tried to touch it.
But, but the, the important point is, is if we don't grow our tax base in the county, I'm not saying. That's why we have zoning boards. We have to grow our tax base. If we don't grow it as it shrinks. Okay, then there's more taxes on those people that live here because prices continue to go up. Okay, county hasn't raised taxes in ten years. It can't keep doing that unless the tax base grows. And it's up to the zoning boards to decide where that grows. We have to have growth. So if we don't have growth. Then people are going to be paying more out of their own pockets. That's just the reality of society.
Yeah, well, we, we disagree with your, your way of getting that increase.
And you, you do know when there's developments, they, part of the development is where the water goes. Right? They just, they just don't just say, oh, we're going to put a development here and we're going to flood everyone around.
It's because of the current land situation. It's nothing but swamp already. That's the deal.
But they're, part of the development is they're going to have to come up with a plan. That works for where the water goes. It's not just, we're going to flood the neighbors. Now that's what neighbors think. They're like, oh my God, you're going to build something there and the water is just going to get reimbursed or redistributed, but it doesn't work that way.
Well, we understand that. And again, these people are intelligent down there at Hughesville Borough and Wolf Township. We sat in the meeting and I believe it's been approximately two years now. That they were aware of what they wanted to do prior to us getting it last April. I think last April, we had it in the paper. About the ARPA, the receiving. I understand from like Hughesville Borough said, oh, we've been knowing this like nine months prior. So now it's been a year later and we're sitting in a meeting and like you said, oh, they got all these plans and of course you're not gonna. Well, when we talked to them, they didn't know what they were going to do.
Who, who, I don't know who's that now?
Uh, this is Dewberry. Dear Barry is there, uh, Mr. Kim, uh, and it's like they had no answers. Okay, that's what is concerning there with the people. They know what they're doing. They're intelligent. And they're not against growth. They're not against some homes, not that many. Um, and then.
And I'm not, I mean, you keep throwing the topic. We're not questioning their intelligence, but there are also people that, that blame the fans of, uh, with rumors. That they're like, they're going to put in a development and flood everyone. And those people are ill informed. Because they, if the, the development, there has to be a plan and a structure that's approved. It's engineer approved, it's geologically approved.
Have you been down there, Mr. Lucina?
I have not.
We would like to see, I'm sure, you, I think Mr. Metzger has.
I was down there.
Yes, uh, Mr..
Yeah, do you know that there's a white apartment building that runs along the side of that property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't know who owns it, but it's, it's an apartment building. There's a lot of people living in that apartment building.
Again, we're not against people. We're not against progress.
That's been, that gentleman's been there since. Seven years, eighties.
Yeah, but say, we, we would, you know, no sense in even continuing, but it would be great for you to come out and, um, see and meet these people. Uh, like I say, when you say these rumors, that is why I'm here. But a lot of this is even, I think, rumors on your end that. This is not people. You need to talk to these people who know, who's been there, who put in that, uh, sewage and the drainage and the water. And those who live there and say, we all there at the end of the, the, the hill where they want to put this, have some pumps in their basement. Sometimes they go dig a hole in their yard for something and it's like, sometimes there's nothing. Two days later, it's filled with water. This is what they're concerned about. Then the ponds they want to put in.
That's where zoning and the, the township, the development, that's their, that's their role. They can deny it if they want to. Okay, our role is to get people to come to the table who want to do development. It's the local municipalities. We're not telling the local municipality what to do. It's up to them and to go the next step. Okay, if they don't want it, then they're going to block it. If they want it, they're going to invite it. But it's our role to bring people to the county. Just like it was our role to bring Chance Aluminum here. Okay, it's our role to get people to come to the table who want to live here, who want to operate businesses here, that want to self-shop here. That want to make like Comby County their home. That's our role to try to invite them to the table. Okay, we don't go into townships to tell them what to do. That's not our role.
Correct, but again, you stated the paper. Uh, again, an issue that got everybody, you know, intelligent people, they get the paper. They want to know what. Is it Pat? What Pat's telling us. And there it was, played out in the paper. I'm not sure it was her article, played out that, oh, hey, look what's going on. That's how they hear about it. And then it's almost like, oh, it's a done deal. When you even say the boroughs and, and the townships, um. There was no application. Here it was in January and February. They thought it was ended last October in the minutes for, uh, Hughesville Borough. They had heard nothing else happening with it. That is played out in the paper. Everybody thinks it's a done deal. They can't go and do anything about it. So I do believe there's a role. I don't know how it hits the paper, but somehow, uh, there was no application. They didn't pay the thousand dollars. Or submit any plans. And, you know, and that happened to leak to me and saying, hey, get on this. What is it? They're playing the, the county, they're saying, is playing that out like it's a done deal. Why would that be? And then again, in February, it came out again. They're hitting the townships, hitting the, the borough. They have no answers. They're like, we don't know what's going on.
I think playing something out like it's a done deal. We, what, or which one?
Well, like everything is, this is what's happening. We need all this. There's going to be housing.
Regarding what, what?
With the, the, the Kim property.
The kid, I haven't had a discussion about the Kim property for, for a long time.
Well, it was in the paper.
You know how I found out that there was a township meeting, that there was a lot of people there? I read it in the Sun Gazette. I saw the picture. That's how I found out. Okay, I've been down there once in the last year to talk to one resident, doesn't want it, who said, I'll pay more taxes. Cause he doesn't want it in his backyard. That's fine. I get it. It's his, that's his prerogative. Okay, I explained to him, it's up to your elected officials down here to make that decision. Okay, we have developers that come to us. We're going to entertain them. If they pass the criteria. And if there's monies available, then we'll have that discussion about those monies being released to them. And we can't say which, you know, we can't tell a developer, you got to develop in this section. We're not going to give you the money. You have to go there. You have to go to the eastern end of the county. You have to go to the western end of the county. We're not going to give you the money. That's not our role. Our role is if you bring us a plan and it passes the credentials, the guidelines, then you go to the next step. And if you can get it through the supervisors and you can get it developed, then it goes to Maya, right Maya? And she then submits the, releases the monies to us for us to sign. That's how that gets done.
So they would come to you? So Dewberry came to you? I thought the procedure was they would should come to the borough and Hughesville Township, then they come to.
Kim, Kim and Dewberry came to us a long time ago with this, this proposition. We told them to submit to the planning commission. Okay, they did. They did. They, they met the criteria. That's the last I've heard from them. I ain't know how long ago that was.
That's what I, honestly, that's the last I heard too. And that's strictly the grant. That has nothing.
Right.
We're, we're not telling them what they can do in that community.
Right.
That's strictly for the grant that was put in place for infrastructure.
Yeah.
And that was available for any developer.
Yeah, well, that's seen in the paper talk. I'm trying to think what does it say. Shannon Rosman is quoted saying how this is going to be so good. I don't know if it mentions the commissioners. I'll have to bring that up. But it's, uh, that was in January and February's paper. And again, uh, when people are out, again, like we're saying. You know what they saw, they're studying down there. They're saying, when you go to the meetings, they're like, this is that, um. Veil of secrecy that is like, and they're not even in my township. This is like the veil of secrecy. In, um, Muncie Township with the mall. And it's like, that's where they're seeing, you're being viewed as, why is it? Why is it being played? You're saying, no, you're not the ones in the paper putting it out. But in quotes, Shannon Rosman, I know, was one talking about the housing. And then again, in February, and that's where they're taken from nowhere.
Shannon can have a personal opinion.
But when we recognize her.
As a planner, that's just her personal opinion that, that, that's a value development.
Well, no, I think she's stating this is what's coming in, not, I don't think it's.
We, we can't state, we cannot, we can state that the grant money is available. We could not determine what any municipality builds. Trust me, I was, I was sending a municipality for fifteen years. The county not once. Stepped over their bounds and said, oh, you're going to allow this guy to build it. They make comments. We asked the county every time our planning department had, I still sit on the planning department floor of a township. We asked for county comments. We don't have to follow that.
Well, I understand. I'm not saying you are, um, that the people are stating that you're pushing, are, you know, you can override. It's just that it's being played in the paper as though it's already been decided.
Listen, I, I, I value the township supervisor credibly, credibly. Cause they're, they're the ones that are in the backyard, say here, okay? We are not going to tell a township what to do in their own community. That's not our role. Uh, one of the challenges, if you would, I hope you would, if, uh, uh, being an elected official. And I've learned very quickly is, um, the, when, when there's change, people fear change. Or often than not. And I'll give you an example right now. My mom, our neighbor's house went into sheriff sale. It was dilapidated. She hadn't been in it, but a friend, a, a mutual person had been in it and the guy said it needs a bulldozer. So my mom, when it came up for sheriff sale, my mom wanted to buy it. And I said, why? She said, I'm going to tear it down. And I said, and do what? She said, it'll just be a big yard. Because I don't want another person going in there that was like this. Cause she was just afraid. She didn't go to the aspect of, hey, we could have new neighbors who rebuild it, who have it great. And now that's what happened. And we have great neighbors and we love them. But her immediate thought was fear. And when people have this, a new development's coming in, oh my God, it's going to flood the whole town. Because the water is just going to run off. It's a swamp. And people's immediate thought with all this is fear. And as an elected official, you are going to hear a lot of, well, I heard this, why I heard this. And we hear it all the time. And our first response is, very often, that's not true. That's not how it went down. That's not how it went. So just because you have a room full of people that are up and on, and I get it, and I understand how it works and what people are afraid of, especially in their neighborhood. But you have to sift through of like what's true and what's not true. Well, we heard, my constituents came to me and said this. And it, just because your constituents came to you and said this, it's not how it happened. And again, when you come with the, the inquisitive of you learn things about the ARPA money that we just spent it or went back to the government. Or this is how, this is why this happened. Or they didn't develop this yet. We don't have a big plan. They have to have dominoes in place. But it is hard and it is hard to calm down a fired up room. Cause they think they know. And they heard, my neighbor told me this. So my God, it's gospel. Well, and it's, it's not. And that's one of the really hard things of governing. Because they don't get really excited about good news. They get really excited about fear. People never pack a school board meeting to tell them how wonderful they're doing. They pack a school board meeting because they're mad about something. And it's one of the really hard things about governing. And some, and you have to sift through because some of the concerns are very, very valid. But some of the concerns are, well, my neighbor told me this. You know, it's like we're flying illegal immigrants at two o'clock in the morning. And I'm, where are they? We're not. It was a private jet that was flying back in. But someone sees a plane at two o'clock in the morning, they think, oh my God, it can't do, it must be illegals. But my brother was pitching in the big leagues. He flew in at two o'clock in the morning all the time. Because that is the way the schedule work. So I, I, there, there, it is one of the tough parts of being an elected official. You hear these people and these people come to you all fired up and they're like, Scott, and Scott's like, that's not how it happened. We don't even, and there's lots of them who are like, as Mark said, we don't even have control over that. We can't tell you if you want to put housing there. If you don't want to put housing there, it's not happening. So you don't have to come to the commissioners meeting and. We don't have control over that. We just have control over budgets. So that, that is one of the really, really hard parts of governing. And, um, and I've learned it quickly because people get passionate about fear. And, and we have to dispel and we have to sift through because again, sometimes they're legitimate. But lots of times it's just, well, my neighbor said this, or I heard this, or I heard this, and then it spreads. And it's, it's oftentimes not the way it works. Um, and so I, I've said that.
Uh, well, just to rebuttal that, first of all, um, I understand maybe where you're sitting. You think it's fear. I've gone to the meetings and it's not fear, it's facts. They line up, they state what it is. And it's not, oh, that's a rumor. It is facts. The, the developer either answer or not answer. So it's not like fear mongers and, and, you know, just rumors. Um, it's, it's facts that these people are. They're not, um, oh, they're afraid of change. No.
If they're, if they're afraid their house is going to get flooded because there's no water plant, that's not fact. That's not fact.
Yeah, because it's already getting water every time it rains. They've already got some pumps in there. It's not a fear of what's going to happen. It literally is. It is a concern. So that's not what's, um, you know, I, I just really encourage you to come down and see what. Uh, is taking place. And again, there's where I've been to the meetings. Because everybody understanding what we're doing with the mall and being on top of what's happening and just questioning. Has contacted many of us from Muncie Township and say, hey, come help us. What, what is going on here? How do we go to the townships? How do we ask questions? They're not fear. It's not afraid. They don't want not, no development. They don't want no, uh, you know, housing. It's just, wow, at this magnitude. And as they then, everybody always says, follow the money. And as they look to say, where did this come from? How much money were you supposed to get? How come nobody else has ever developed? You know, and this is when she, you know, so that's made them look into how much land in, in Hughesville or Wolf Township is left to be developed. None, except this one. So these people are very intelligent, very on the ball of what they're, they're stating. Um, so anyways, I just take a little bit of notice, um, with that. That's why I go and see. And people say, go find this out. Um, that's where I'm here now. But, uh, again, I don't think it's, I know it's not fear. It's just concerned. And if you live there, I think you'd be in the meetings with us, saying what is going on. So, and like you said, somebody said one person, uh, there's more than one. They've got a petition. They've got signs. They're like. Their voice they feel is not, you know, wants to be heard. And, um, and I believe.
What's the petition about?
Petition, the concern, just getting it out, um, to say what's going on. You don't even know there was a petition?
Well, no, you can tell. What's the petition about? You don't have a petition that says I'm concerned.
Yeah, well, petition is, we're concerned and getting people to sign. Are you concerned? You, I think that's to be, it's quite lengthy, but it's basically. Uh, concerned with what's going on here. The taxes, what's, what this could entail. When they realized it was going to be like, uh, four hundred residents right there. And many of them are all those who started talking about it with the, the water. And again, they didn't hear about it until they saw it in the paper. So anyways, just the, the fear thing, I don't think was appropriately to display these people's concerns.
Well, I mean, that is, that meeting is the opportunity to give the residents the, the voice to express those concerns. That, that's why they're advertised the way they are.
Correct.
Is to say, we have received a plan through. And I, I don't know if it was through their zoning hearing board or if it was from the township supervisors having, uh, through a conditional increase or whatever their subdivision plan was. Uh, but, but that's why, how zoning and land development works is there's meetings. And applications that have to go through the local municipalities to determine. One, is the subdivision and land development appropriate for that area? And have you considered all of the concerns that might arise? Whether it's infrastructure, stormwater runoff, um, utilities, things like that, access. Um, and then once they've identified those things, those here, those hearings are meant for residents to raise their concerns. So your municipality, your supervisors, zoning hearing boards can ask those questions and say, hey. Are you addressing those? And then they're engineers. They all have engineers. They all have municipal engineers that are reviewing these plans. They're looking at those exact types of things to make sure. Do we need water impoundments for stormwater to make sure that the water is going somewhere and not being displaced out to the neighboring properties? So if they're getting water now, they're identifying an issue that may be legitimate. So they're exercising their rights to do that. Nobody's, I don't think at the municipal level is probably trying to hide that. Um, they're, they're having those meetings so those expressions can be made. County commissioners aren't part of that process at all. Not one of these gentlemen would, would go down there.
Oh, no, do I think it? I'm just stating.
Their sole role was is to encourage development within the county because the things that you've heard them say exactly is. There is development coming from commercial industry. The commercial industries are saying, our number one problem is going to be workforce and where is our workforce going to live? And all of the experts that they're listening to relative to the real estate market is. There is not enough inventory in Lycoming County to house what is potentially coming our way with the chance. Uh, aluminum's and the different industries.
Well, just different professional jobs. We've, we've, we've had different people that.
UPMC has.
Yeah, UPMC.
Yeah, all of them. And so what they have identified is a program. They've utilized state funds. They've utilized state funds that aren't taxpayer monies, they're state funds that are coming, whether it's the Act thirteen funds, the ARPA funds, things like that.
Direct thirteen funds.
Correct.
Right, so it's taxpayer money.
No, it isn't.
No.
Well, where are they getting the money?
He's the gas one, he's the gas one.
But where are they getting that gas money from?
From the gas companies.
Gas companies.
All of that is gas company money.
Act thirteen funds are are generated from the gas revenue.
Is from who, is that the money that was given to Fanvest?
No, that was.
The ARPA, ARPA was the.
It's ARPA, that's federal monies.
That's American relief, that was the COVID.
Yeah, no, COVID was, COVID was.
Or just to clarify, there's two separates, there's there's ARPA, which we got that we can use for the community, and then there's an ARPA that was kind of like money that we use for payroll convenience, we use that money for part of it, yeah.
Yeah, it was split in half.
Okay, but none of that funding could go back, I was understanding.
It cannot go into the general fund, if it is not used within a certain period of time, it has to go back to the original sources. So either the Act thirteen monies go back into the Act thirteen funds, and we get reallocated to appropriate Act thirteen projects.
And I have to report it on them.
This particular project can only be used for infrastructure, which is the grant agreement says, once you have obtained all of your approvals from your local municipalities, and you have a actual project ready to go, you pay money as the developer to put in this infrastructure, and the county will reimburse you for all of those expenses that qualify for Act thirteen funds. Plain and simple, that's all it is, it does not say the county guarantees that this project's going to be approved. It guarantees that we're going to assist you in getting this approved, all it says is, if you do X, Y, and Z through your local municipality to get this development done the right way, through vocal zoning and land development, and you do actually develop the properties like you're supposed to, then we will reimburse you for certain expenses. And that's all these gentlemen have done, and and as through that process, and so any misconception to that is just a misconception. Um, there's plenty of documentation out there from the grant applications that say, this is what our role is, and this is, and what they're all saying is, is our role is not to get involved in local government, you do what you do at the local level. We are just identifying a crisis within Lake Como County, and we are going to assist in helping alleviate that crisis.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Tony, Tony? Tony says, I'm ready for lunch.
I I just want to say, on the YWCA, we used them as a polling place for many years. Uh, and so in addition to their participation, they did that for the county for a long time, we just to them about four or five years ago, and they they leaned more heavily into housing folks there, and it became clear that it's a good polling place, not going in at all with the need for some of their clients to be anonymous, but for a long time, I think decades, we could spend as polling place, so they gave back.
That's great to hear, yeah, thanks for sharing that. Okay, any online?
There's just one by Thomas Adams, he says, happy Easter, Lake Como County, happy Passover, two excellent remarks from the commissioner. And there, someone just popped up too. Harper will try, thank you commissioners for standing for progress and doing what you can to kind of the disinformation fear exo- exonophobia and not my backyard crowd.
Okay, thank you, we've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned to April twenty fourth. Right here in this Peter, thank you.